Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gents, friends and neighbors. Welcome to this edition of the State and City Council on Monday, August 7th, 2017. Would all those who will like mine, please join me for a flag session.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, the United States of America, and to the republic which we serve, our nation, our government, and the citizens of our home and world.
Okay. All right. And for our young visitor from La Belle-Française, Merci Locu. Is that pretty good? All right. That's it, though. Okay. Um, Rocco, everyone's here except Counselor Gladwell, and she may make an entrance here momentarily. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? Um, declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera, anything? Okay, presentations, comments from the public. Anyway, you've got, there's the microphone, and you've got three minutes or maybe a little more until we get tired of listening. But, anyone? No one? Okay. All right.
You're here, we'd love for you to say something.
I'll say something. So, this is Sandra Fixon.
Get up close to that thing and tell us who you are and where you live, please.
I am Sandra Fixon, and I live on State and Sow Road, just outside of Stateon. And my kids go to the school district here, and they go to, um, I have one at the high school and one at the middle school. And I'm here because, um, we've been trying to get, um, more involvement with the teen center, and, um, it was my understanding that there might be some discussion on that tonight, so I just wanted to, um, listen and hear what was going on about, uh, just listen to some of the discussions.
Okay.
I didn't see it on the agenda, but I was hoping that there would be some.
Well, come on.
Thank you.
You just, you really never know what's gonna happen at these, okay?
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, anyone else? Barb? Nothing?
We're all here for the teen center.
We're all here for that? Okay, all right. Okay, let's go to the consent agenda, two things. Uh, July 17th, City Council minutes, and, uh, off-premises sales, oil CC, new outlet application. Did everyone have a chance to look at, look at the, uh, at that, uh?
If you have, I move in.
Anyone had a chance to look at that? Okay.
I move, except the consent agenda is written.
Okay, I've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
That's motion and a second, thank you, folks. To approve the consent agenda as, as given. There we go. Uh, nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Hearing, nothing negative, we'll declare that passed, and we'll go to a public hearing. And, let's see, here we go. Now, I have to read a bunch of stuff. Uh, "Good evening, my name is Hank Porter, and as mayor, I'll be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in a matter of land use file, uh, four days, oh six slash seventeen, a request to vacate the alley between North Second Avenue and North Third Avenue, running from East Hollister Street to East Pine Street. The hearing is now open. A copy of a map showing the area proposed to be vacated is available at the back counter. Also at the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing. The City Council's rules of procedure for public hearing and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You are encouraged to obtain a read and, uh, and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I'd ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was provided for this hearing." I hear none. "To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case?" I hear none. "Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of this body?" I hear none. We are now ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleishman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, the issue before you, this evening's a public hearing, to be followed by consideration of an ordinance to vacate the alley as described in the mayor's opening statement. Uh, you've got in your packet the application submitted by Caitlin Setgast, who is a property owner, uh, adjacent to the alley. She has submitted, uh, signatures from four of the five owners of property adjacent to the alley. As a result of that, the, uh, draft ordinance that is, uh, before you does not vacate the entire alley, because state law requires that the, uh, petition or application for vacation include, uh, consent from all of the adjacent owners, and she was not able to obtain one. So, the draft ordinance that you have before you, um, vacates only the north, 150 feet of the alley, because we're missing that last signature. Um, the alley is, uh, not accessible to the public, you can't drive on it, it's, it, if you went by, you'd think it was the neighbor's lawn. It has been mowed and maintained in lawn by the neighboring property owners. There are no publicly owned utility services in the alley. Uh, State and Cooperative Telephone Company has a residential service line that goes from north, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, East Hollister, uh, crosses, goes up the alley and serves, uh, Miss Setgast's, um, home. Uh, they have responded to our notice, saying that if the alley is vacated, they will need to have an easement, or they will need to relocate the line at Miss Setgast's expense. She's well aware of that, and was from the beginning of this process. Uh, the planning commission held a hearing on the request back in June. Uh, a number of the affected property owners were present, all testified in favor, and you've got in your packet the order from the planning commission recommending that the alley be vacated, and it is the recommendation from staff that the alley be vacated. Um, if we're able to, since we're not, we're not able to get the signature of all of the adjacent owners, the recommendation is to vacate only the north 150 feet, which is what the draft ordinance in front of you does.
Mr. Fleishman, if we only vacate the north of 100 feet or whatever, does that resolve the issue for the SCTC there on the southern side?
Yes, if, if you only vacate the north 150 feet, then the service line to Miss Setgast's property will still be in an alleyway. Yes.
Okay. Did I, Dan, did I miss something by, is there an applicant here to offer a presentation on this?
There is someone representing the applicant.
Okay, let's have that person speak. I, I jumped.
Hello, my name is Dan Setgast, I'm Caitlin's father. I live over on, uh, West Locust Street, and we are missing, uh, one signature from that. And if this does pass, then my daughter is willing to move the telephone line at her own expense.
Okay.
Now, one of the neighbors there has been mowing the lawn for a couple of years now. There's no access, no, or no way to drive on there, and if a truck or a car did drive down there, then they'd, they'd probably get stuck. There's no gravel, or, it's all run over now.
Okay.
And a week ago, I did, uh, well, my daughter was in a auto accident here in town a while back, and she's had a severe concussion, and that's why we don't have the one signature let, uh, done yet, because she kept forgetting to, uh, get it sent off. So, I went ahead and did that for her, and the gentleman has the paperwork now, but we just haven't heard back from him. But she does know the gentleman, and we're pretty sure that he's gonna go ahead and, uh, sign off on it.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the show?
Dan, if we vacate the northern portion, then can we come back a second time and vacate the final lot when we get the approval from the landowner? If we move forward your recommendation number two, to vacate the, partially vacate before we have approval for tonight, can we come back and vacate that last chunk when we have approval?
If the council approves the ordinance tonight, then we would need to start the process all over again to vacate the, the last 50 feet. With the testimony that we just received, that we, that, that last signature may be forthcoming, my recommendation to council would be to close the hearing tonight after we get all of the other testimony, leave the record open, and postpone deliberation on the ordinance until your next meeting, which won't be until, well, it'll be, well, or, or to postpone a decision until your mid-September meeting, which would give them 30 days to get that last signature in.
Sounds reasonable. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Not so much a question as an observation, Dan. Um, I think that the way of the petition for vacancy, uh, is presented here, uh, in the paragraph itself, uh, it says represents the consent of all owners of land. There's only four of the five people sitting there, so I think that right there in itself negates the entire application. Just an observation.
Dan, on a macro sense, there seem to be a lot of these alleys downtown that are no longer used as alleys. Is there something that we can do, rather than piecemeal? I know, coming from Lake Oswego, we had a bunch of alleys that weren't served as utility alleys anymore, and we vacated them all. Is there something that the planning commission can, we don't need an answer now, just a thought?
Well, two or three years ago, we identified a number of alleys that did not have, uh, that were not used, were not useful, did not have public utilities, and did not have private utilities in them. And the city vacated a dozen or so, uh, alleys around the city. This was not on the list, because it had an SCTC facility in it. And now, the property owners have come forward.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move we suspend.
Wait a minute, the, the public hearing hasn't been closed yet, so you're jumping the gun.
We're just getting warm. Mr. Setgast, on the, in this, uh, the application, down toward the end of the, of the paragraph that says, "The alley is currently undeveloped, the surface area is grassed, and has been maintained in lawn by the owners of adjacent properties." But it isn't, it isn't well enough maintained to drive through? Is it walkable?
Yeah, it's walkable. And as soon as, uh, and the people that do mow the lawns, uh, like today, you could drive through there, because it's dry. But on a very rainy day, uh, I doubt you'd be able to get through there safely, without getting stuck.
All right, I got that, thank you. Other questions from council? Hmm, okay, um...
And she is willing to move the, uh, telephone line at her own expense.
Okay.
And if it wasn't for this accident, we would have this last signature in here by now.
Okay. Um, okay, there's no other questions from the council. Proponents' testimony? That'd be you, sir, unless there's someone else that wishes to speak in the positive on this. Anything? Opponents' testimony, anyone that's opposed to this? Okay. Uh, governmental agencies? And I guess we heard the city's okay with this, apparently, and the telephone company, they just like that line moved or access to it, right? Do I understand that correctly, Dan?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, general testimony? Questions from the public? More questions from the council? An applicant summary, anything else you'd like to say, sir?
Well, it'd be nice if, uh, we could get this passed and get everybody on the same page.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, since my daughter already has put forth the, uh, expense for this, um, and I've also put that in the letter, that there would be no expense to this other person.
Okay.
It's just, you know, if it wasn't for the accident, we would have it.
Okay. Tell me one more time, she's, she or he, they have been approached and what, just are unwilling to sign, or?
Oh, uh, no.
Or they're not?
My daughter had a concussion, so she forgot to send the letter, and I sent it this last Monday with a cover letter explaining what, uh, was going on.
Ah.
And he just hasn't got back to us yet.
Okay, I see, all right. Okay. Uh, Dan, a staff summary, if anything?
I, I don't have anything else to add, uh, other than to, to say with the testimony that we've gotten tonight about the last signature forthcoming, that the recommendation would be to close the hearing tonight, leave the record open until your September meeting, and we'll put either this ordinance or a revised ordinance if we get that last signature in front of you at that time.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, let's go ahead and close the hearing, Dan. Council deliberation, what do you folks want to do?
I move we accept number six. Leave voices in the city planner.
Number six.
Which was close the hearing and record, and continue deliberation at the next meeting.
A motion then, uh, I don't hear a second yet, but to...
Which one do you have, five or six, Dan?
Well...
Wait, wait.
Neither.
Neither.
I've got a motion.
A recommendation that's not in the staff report, which was to close the hearing, keep the record open until your September meeting. For the submission of written testimonies.
That's, that's still number six, right?
It's, no, number six closes the record.
Okay.
Number five?
Number five modified, to leave the record open longer.
What was the date, September what?
I don't, I don't know.
What's the day of the next?
Date is the September meeting is.
Well, yeah, we have yet to talk about what meetings we're gonna have in the next month, so...
September 18th, the next meeting of the planning, in September.
So, uh...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to offer a motion to close the hearing, leave the record open, and bring it back on September 18th.
Second? Okay. September 18th, thank you. And Mark, you okay with, to, with me vacating your motion, your earlier motion?
Please, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, option five, close the hearing but keep the record open for submission of written testimony, da-da-da-da-da, and final closure of the record on September 18th, 2017. All right. Folks happy with that?
Aye.
Alyssa, would you hold the council?
Yes. Counselor Cronquist?
Aye.
Counselor Gladwell?
I feel uncomfortable voting on this.
Same, okay. Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Ustleman?
Yes.
7:00 PM?
Counselor Niegel?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Four to zero, okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, "The council's action may be appealed within 21 days of the main law of the notice of decision."
Take action.
There was no action. We moved it to the September.
There's no action. I don't have to do this, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, here we go. Next, order of business. It should be no surprise. Why, I insist on this counselor sitting next to me, because things go a lot better for her here. New, no unfinished business, new business, resolution number 964, adopting a city of state in representation in the updates to the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Woo! Staff report. Chief?
Mayor and council, I bring to you tonight the, the resolution to approve our portion of the, the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan. What this plan does is, uh, whenever there is a, a natural disaster or a major emergency in an area, many times, uh, there needs to be assistance from, uh, from FEMA. Uh, and in order to, to do that, to get, uh, to get FEMA assistance now, they are requiring that, uh, every jurisdiction have a mitigation plan to show that they, uh, that they are aware that there are needs, that things that need to be addressed in the area, and, uh, and that sets a plan to, uh, that those things will be worked on over time. Uh, this, uh, is done by evaluating, uh, what the problem areas are, and then putting them in the plan. Uh, we were, uh, offered to, to be put into the Marion County, uh, joint, uh, plan, and that's what this is. Um, is, uh, so tonight, what the resolution is for us to accept, uh, that our plan has been put into the, the joint, uh, Marion County plan.
So, Chief, the only thing pertinent to this plan is that relating to Stateon?
Correct.
As far as we're concerned?
Correct. The, the, I, I put the whole, it's actually even just a, a portion of the plan, but it's all the cities that were, uh, included in there besides Marion County.
Chief, you're our representative on this group, right?
Correct.
Board, working group.
Correct.
More meetings to go to.
So, yes.
Okay. Do they, uh, they schedule meetings on the weekends and evenings, so you don't have to take your daytime duties to do this?
No, generally, the meetings are usually during the week.
Okay.
This is part of, part of what I'm, what I do.
Six or seven in the morning?
Yeah.
So, done, okay, all right. What, what do you folks want to do with this? What is it, what is it asking us to do? I read this once. It says, "Approve the resolution adopting the city of state in representation in the updates to the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation, uh, or, two, approve resolution 964, uh, as amended, or three, no motion needed." Um, what would you folks like to do?
Quick question, the one that flagged, uh, I saw on this thing was the, uh, use of propane for heating that we want to mitigate, or something like that. When I was reading through it, I wasn't sure if that applied to Stateon or not. How many people you, I mean, do you know how many people use propane for heating? It was one of the...
I don't think that, that was part of the Stateon section.
It was part of some section in here, is to mitigate the use of propane for heating.
I don't think that was part of the Stateon section.
No, don't worry about it.
Rich?
Yeah.
Um, one part of the Stateon section is getting, uh, getting, uh, portable toilets in the event that something happens?
Yes.
I just want to make sure the city council's in task for that.
So, our Highway 22 Eclipse, I think, is gonna be, you're in trouble if you need to go here.
Do we have a satellite phone?
No.
One of the cell companies is putting a portable cell tower in Madras and one in Mitchell, there's that wonderful little city again tonight. Just in case this excitement later on this month gets out of hand, I guess. Anyway, okay, what do you folks want to do with this? As presented, or with amendments, or not at all?
Mr. Mayor? I'll offer a motion to approve resolution number 964, resolution adopting the city of state in representation in the updates to the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. For option one, approve the resolution, 964, adopting the city of state in representation in the updates to the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing no opposition, we'll declare the motion passed, and we'll take our part in this. Okay, what's the next thing? Uh, let's see, fees and charges, Mr. Campbell, staff report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In close, you'll find an update to the fee schedule, there is a one change for the police department of parking, as noted. Um, but what we're mostly focusing on is the fees for the state and pool. Uh, we had passed a few resolutions, uh, recently, and had discussed that we had bring this forward. We did look, we were able to find information from 2003 and 2008, to kind of compare where we're at. I do think we're need to continue to look at these and price, especially as data becomes available. What you're seeing is, is a couple changes I want to discuss. Quickly, we reduced the auto pay discount, uh, we look to provide a consistent, uh, increase in fees, multiplier for non-residents, and also provide equity and discounts to provide it. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions about this.
Fees and charges. Everyone had a chance to look through those, and see if there was anything that jumped out at them about those. No real surprises there? Did we see this last time?
No, we, we had discussed bringing this back forward, and we had time to look and do a little more analysis. And, and like I said, we were able to find analysis from 2003 and 2008, that's a little bit dated.
Okay.
So, it was consistent, although I think we maybe, um, are a little behind, looking at...
These are, a lot of these are mainly about just recouping our costs in these, aren't we?
It's trying to find a fair balance of, of making it affordable, and yet, making it so that we can cover a majority of the cost of the pool, that's correct.
Okay.
And I, I do want to emphasize that as we get more data, recent data, with, with data analysis, that I hope we can do that, and come up with even better pricing as we go forward.
Okay, all right. What would you folks like to do with this one?
Chief, the other question was ski, or skateboard, skis, toboggans, and slides, is that a violation fee? Or, back in 2013, when it snowed and I actually skied downtown, would I have to pay $25? That's the next one?
That's not a new one. It's not part of the new fee structure.
That's part of the, that's not part of the new changes.
Mm-hmm.
But if you have a question about it, I can answer it.
Yeah, what is it?
That, that is, uh, it's a violation, that if you're, uh, if you're, if you're doing those things in town, causing a, a problem, if you're stopping traffic by doing that, that's what it's for.
It's a traffic law.
Yes.
Okay. All right. What would you folks like to do with that one?
I move we accept the changes.
All right. Uh, a motion then to accept, um, resolution number 965, fees and charges.
My seconded.
And Jill, a second, thank you. And, any council discussion anymore? Okay, let's go to a vote on that. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And oppose, same sign, hearing none, we'll declare the motion passed, and we'll have that fee schedule adopted. Partnership for Resource Assistance, thank you, for Rural Environments Participant. Uh, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Fleishman on this one, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Staff is, uh, looking to you for authorization to use funds that are already included in this year's budget for economic development activities, to strengthen our partnership with the Friends of Old Town Stateon, to participate in the University of Oregon's RARE, or Resource Assistance for Rural Environments Program. Those of you who have served on the council for more than a few years will recall that the city participated in the RARE program, I believe it was seven or eight years ago, and we had somebody here, um, working on that, and, and prior to that, the city has participated several times in, uh, in the past. Uh, it is a program by which the university partners with the National AmeriCorps program, brings in college graduate, many with master's degree, uh, to, uh, work in rural communities throughout the state, uh, working on community development, uh, pri- projects. They are placed with the community for an 11-month period in which they are committed to providing at least 1,700 hours of assistance to the community. The Friends of Old Town State has received a RARE participant. There is a cash match requirement of $23,000, which pays for the stipend and assists with the benefits that the participant receives. The Friends of Old Town State were not able to raise the funds necessary. They had applied for a grant that they were expecting to receive but were denied. So, staff and the friends have been talking about a partnership in which the work program would be adjusted so that the person would be spending roughly half their time working for the city rather than for the friends. And staff has come up with several ideas. We haven't finalized what it is we think we want this person to be doing. But some of the ideas that we've come up with are to working on an update of the city's downtown revitalization plan. The plan is now 10 years old. It's time to update the inventory, put together some type of stakeholders group that would be wider and broader than just those people who are involved in Friends of Old Town State and work on new goals and strategies for downtown. The budget for this year... Secondly, the budget for this year includes funds for development of some economic development strategy. This person could help offset some of the consultant costs by doing some of the late work, basic research, data preparation, et cetera. And thirdly, the budget includes some funds for the development of a housing strategy for the city. And again, this person could offset both staff time and consultant costs by their involvement in that effort. And there may be some other things that we come up with as we further explore it. So, the recommendation from staff is to partner with the Friends of Old Town State and equally share the cost and time of the RARE participant, which would be an allocation of $11,500 in city funds to support the person. Answer any questions you've got.
Thank you, Dan. This possibility, this falls in line, you and I, what, six, eight months ago? I don't know, first of the year, maybe last fall, did some thinking, brainstorming about somebody or how to do some kind of housing inventory. And we were going to use real estate people who had maybe their thumb on the housing market better than some of the rest of us. Still a wonderful idea, it just never went anywhere.
Right.
And I never brought it to the council. But this is... Yeah, I like this. Go ahead, folks, someone else.
It's a good thing.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Dan, one of the challenges with Job Share is always determining who gets the majority of the pie or if it's split evenly. How's the management of this person going to, under whose supervision on the city's side, will it answer to you?
The person will... I will supervise the person for the work they are doing on behalf of the city.
Okay.
Part of the arrangement that we already had in place with the Friends of Old Town State and this person would be housed in the planning department office anyway.
Okay.
So that while even... So, I would not necessarily be supervising their work they were doing for the friends, but would be there as a resource.
Gotcha.
Someone else? Lots of positive thoughts here, folks.
I think it's a great idea. You know, a year and a half ago, Hank and I were standing downtown watching a piece of tumbleweed blow downtown. We've seen a lot of positive changes since then. I think this is just going in the right direction.
It's just great leadership. So, could we get some kind of affirmative action here?
I move we choose to partner with FOTS, option number one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There is two members on the council that are also members of FOTS, so it asks them to declare their conflict of interest potentially.
I am only a member of FOTS by having a commercial property in the jurisdiction of FOTS. I'm not a member of their board of directors.
I am a member of FOTS, and I have rightfully not opened my mouth.
I attend their meetings and support their cause.
Mm-hmm, so you've talked to them before.
Well, I've talked to anybody who's interested in developing First or Third Street, of course.
You didn't declare at the beginning.
Well, I mean, if I have to declare my interest in economic development for this town, I'm just taking this carte blanche wherever and whatever.
Well, we know how this works, people. If they sense or feel or are challenged on a conflict of interest, all I have to do is declare it, and they can still move ahead. They're still able to vote, unless they take themselves out of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Was there a motion made or not?
Yes, I made a motion, Mr. Counselor.
Okay, there was a motion. I need a second.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Brian. Have a motion... This is option one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. A motion and a second then, to choose to partner with Friends of Old Town State and the RARE program and provide the expenditure of up to $11,500 in city funds for the cash match with a stipulation that the RARE participants spend half their time working on city economic development projects. Is there any other discussion? Alyssa, poll the council again, would you please?
Of course. Counselor Niegel?
Yes.
Counselor Uslemann?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
One abstention. All right, thank you, folks. Let's see, what else? Commission reports there are none. None. Business from the city administrator. Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any business for the public this time.
Nothing?
Okay.
Business from the mayor. I have one thing, and this is... I'm just throwing this open for discussion. I'd like to move that August 21st meeting. And I just think there's going to be, even if it's a nothing, or if it's a catastrophe, you know, the gamut of emotion on this is everywhere, from a nothing, a poof, to end of the world. I just would like to move that meeting away from the 21st.
Yeah.
And it could go 22nd, 23rd, even the next night, I think that would be fine. And this is no deep research, this is just a gut feeling on this, but I would offer that for your consideration.
I agree. I think at the end of the day on the 21st, we're all going to be exhausted from one thing or another. And city staff and city resources and city administration are going to be having better things to do than to talk about alley validations. We can do it the next day or the day after.
Okay. Anyone else?
I had already called and said I wouldn't be there if it was on the 21st.
And I may not be either. Here's the reason for that. Our local Veterans of Foreign Wars group is going to set up beyond Gates, up at the Maples Rest Area for about four or five days, passing out water, coffee, and passing out. And I don't think I have to spend all that time up there, but there would be some of it. And I'd just like to have the 21st free if we could. So, that's a selfish reason, maybe. But, anyone else?
Fine with me. I'll be gone.
You'll be gone, Priscilla will be gone.
We won't have a room.
May not. Keith, I don't want to dump this on you, but can you think of a Tuesday or Wednesday night? Would that work?
I think what we can do is work to try to come up with an alternate date, see if there's availability and when that would be. Make sure we have the room and scheduling and all that, so...
Will people be here?
We can do it tomorrow and get things out to the governing body to determine when the next time should be.
Will people be here Tuesday and Wednesday? I mean, will people be back? Okay. Can we do that? Let's reschedule that meeting of the 21st for a later date, and we'll let Keith work on that and see what he can do for us. Is that okay? All right, thank you. Business from the council? Nothing? Future agenda items?
I did want to let people know, I don't know if it maybe was said before I came in, that there will be a meeting specifically for businesses around the eclipse and what they... Just to update them on what's happening in town with our emergency first responders and the hospital and other things. A week from... Or is it this Thursday? Keith, what is it? What is that meeting?
This Thursday at 6:30.
6:30 at the library. If you know any business owners, please tell them that they're welcome to come.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Priscilla. Meeting in the library, Thursday? Thursday night? 6:30. Business. Future agenda items, municipal court violations and solicitor code revisions. Is there anything else this evening, folks? Okay, we're done. Thank you.